That was at six o'clock.
Yeah. First order of business is we have one new member of the council to be sworn in, Mr. Mayor.
I solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the ordinances and regulations of the Borough of Indiana.
And the ordinances and regulations of the Borough of Indiana.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
As a member of council of the Borough of Indiana.
As a member of council of the Borough of Indiana.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
We're going to have a vote, so we need to have roll call.
No, no.
Also. Hearing. Kratza. Lancaster. Smith. Steelman. Taylor. Warnock. Ten present, two absent.
Kyle printed it out.
You don't have to, we can get copies if nobody wants to print out stuff.
Or agendas, or changes to the agenda. The participation.
There may have somebody at the.
Oh, is there somebody?
Explain the process.
If there is someone attending remotely who would like to address the council, please do, raise your hand virtually, if you know how to do that. And we'll let you in. No hands being raised? All right. We don't need an executive session as far as I know. Do we need to go? Then the action items. The second page of your packet, there are two motions. This is something that Nicole and I have plotted. Requires a motion, and I'm going to ask if somebody will make. One at a time. Award, and you've got the information in your packet on these awards. We thought it would be a nice. Twenty some years, however many years it was. That he's appreciated. I mean, you're appreciated. To nominate George Hood.
Submit all the paperwork. Kyle will do all the letters and submit all the good information.
Sir, second. Moved and seconded, so any discussion? Read the motion to nominate George Hood for the 2021 Mayor of the Year Award and authorize borough staff to submit all required documentation to the Association of Mayors of the Boroughs of Pennsylvania. No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. Another award that we would also like to nominate him for, the distinguished service award. Just enough years of service. And again, to authorize borough staff to. Submit all the required documentation. Sir, we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion of this one?
How many, how many terms did Mayor Hood serve? Does anybody have a number in there?
Twenty years.
It was more than twenty years.
It was more than twenty years.
So. At least five or six.
He did not complete his final term.
Sure. From six. Yeah, that's distinguished service.
Hey, no discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. Yes, hi Brenda. Nicole, you and the staff will take care of the paperwork.
Thank you.
To the committees.
No, we're going to do the council orientation first.
Excuse me. I don't know. I'm looking right at it.
Hear this because you've been here so long, but I thought it would be nice for the new, the new members. And I'm just going to give a minute because if you don't have a copy of it. Pulling it up or we have a little glitch. Basically, it's just going to be an overview of. The Indiana Borough in general, offices and different departments. Talked a little bit last night about his community development at his meeting last night. Does everybody have a copy or have it online? Started on the first page anyways. The first one is obviously the list of the different committees, admin, community development, public safety, and public works. And each of you were assigned to be on, serve on a committee, and it's my understanding you guys all got your first choice. So that's a good thing. Attached is a little explanation of each committee. Now again, you're more than welcome to attend all the meetings if you'd like. They're all open to the public. You're more than welcome to attend the different committees if you want. You should receive a calendar for the full year of all the committees. If you haven't, we'll get that out to you. And also, there's Shea Tree Planning Commission, different boards and commissions, like zoning hearing board. Those are all, those also meet every month. And if you wish to attend that, that will also be part of the committee meeting schedule that if you haven't received it, we'll get it out to you. Those are the different committees. And I know at the first committee, we'll probably go into more detail, and I know Ben did it last night at community development. The Oregon organization chart. Now, these do, this, the two attached, the needs updated, which we are working on. But the general idea is to show you the committee structure of the Borough in general. Now, some of the. Staff has changed here at the bottom, but we need to update that. But the general structure remains the same, and where council and committees fall into categories. And I think we lost our little slide, but anyways. The attached then also is the Indiana Borough Police Department. Just Chief Shaw will be giving a detailed report next month. And I'm not going to try to even go into detail to explain any police department stuff. I know Justin and Chief Shaw and I work well together when it comes to the budget and financials. So that's all I. I can explain about the police department. And I know his structure of his department has changed slightly, and he will again update that next month. So let's start with the administration department. That is where I am located. If you would like to stop and see me talk about any concerns or problems. I am there every day, eight to four. Peter's been stopping in and open door, please stop in. As you see.
Get the door open.
Yeah. Locked, so we don't have strangers just strolling in. Now on here again, the Borough Manager and Administrative Supervisor, that position has been combined. And because that was a pre, that was my previous position, so we just combined that. And also our Communication and Grants Coordinator Kyle is located there. Payroll Clerk Lori and Administrative Assistant, she's like our right-hand person to every, all the department heads. And the utility clerks are up there. So if there's any questions on admin, please feel free to come in and. We're there to serve the public. That is right upstairs. Yes, that is the, the office. Again, the next slide with the Borough Manager and Administration Supervisor, that's just an overview of some day-to-day operations. I did want to point out on here. I know there was some questions in the past. If you guys have a concern or questions, who do you contact? If it's something that you would like to have a question on a department, contact me and I can try to find the answer for you. That might be easier for somebody to call the department head if. But if it's for your committee, a department head from your committee, then you can get in contact with them. But if you see somebody out, if you see our Public Works Director out on the street and they're doing a project and you're saying, hey, what are they doing? Why are they out there? Maybe contact me first, and then I can give you the rhyme or reason why they're there in that place and time and situation. So instead, I think that would cause some, I think in the past, there might have been some communication errors back and forth with people just reaching out directly to different staff, and maybe we can. Funnel the communication a little bit better if you, if you want to just reach out to me. Again, my cellphone, I'm here in the office, so I'm easy access.
That we have been living under since the, we had Michael, since Michael, our previous manager resigned, we've been living under a policy where sort of going, that communication went through committee heads. And I think we are back to our policy that really, it's our manager that most questions go through, particularly if like, you know, there's things around you around town, or you're like, what's with this? Unless you're contacting somebody about like a committee meeting, committee staff, I avoid contacting our department heads. Do that communication through Nicole, because what had happened, not just more recently, but you know, several years, department has just get overwhelmed. It's hard to have 12 bosses, and so it's very difficult for them to field a lot of requests. So we need to do our job as counselors and not put things on their work plan. That's, that's Nicole's job to give department heads their work plan. It's also, to a certain extent, our jobs in committees, in committee meetings, but those happen sort of in committee meetings. So you really, I think, I think it's really important, at least for me, I think it's really important that we make that pretty clear. Because it just, it serves to wear on our staff, at least in the past, our staff has been really overwhelmed with a number of like bosses felt, folks felt like they had. So. Even though we, you don't feel like it yourself, you're like, well, I'm just, I'm just calling them up, you know, there's 12 of us, and if we're all just doing that, that's really difficult to do if you have a work plan and you have a boss who isn't whole already. I talked too much already, but it's, it's a big deal.
They obviously, every department head is willing to listen, but I think that could happen at your committee meetings and, and that, so. The next slide again explains the different general idea of what each, the payroll and utilities department and grants coordinator, again, that communicated grant coordinator, he does a lot more than just these four little lines on there. That mostly we all do, so. Next is our code, our code enforcement department that is located downstairs. Stephanie Dunlap is actually the department director, and she oversees the code enforcement department and the planning zoning department, which I'll get into next. But downstairs, they are located. Brenda is actually here. She's the administrative assistant, Borough Code Official downstairs along with the three inspectors. Again, if there's, on the next slide is an overview of some of their touch base on their day-to-day. Operations, community development handles a lot of the planning zoning and. Details on that. We just had the committee meeting last night, and that was explained to the new councilman and Josh. The planning zoning department, again, they report Stephanie, Greg Irwin is, is down there. He is recently new. He's. Part of the zoning and planning and zoning department. Again, you can read the overviews of what. The planning official does. He mostly assists Stephanie in a lot of the day-to-day operations. Parking enforcement is located at our parking garage, obviously, in, on Water Street in Nixon. Parking, parking, the parking department actually comes to both committees depending on what the topic is. They will go to administration and also public safety. So they attend sometimes both, so depending on the topic, they'll attend either committee, kind of falls under one of those committees. There is a supervisor down there. They have three parking enforcement officers and a maintenance person that maintains the parking department garage.
So if we had, for example, if we weren't on that committee, obviously, we're, we could go to the meeting. If we had a question, though, could we go directly to the committee members and just email them, or is the appropriate form would go to the meeting, or how would you?
I think Pat will get into, the solicitor will, sorry, will get into the more of the, does that kind of fall under the sunshine stuff when you're there talking back and forth?
If it's one, if it's one-on-one, I don't think that's ever an issue. It's when you get into these mass email where you could theoretically have a quorum. That's when it becomes problematic. But you know, certainly, Luke, if you have a question, you want to call Gerald or Banner, whoever, or Don, no problem. That's not going to violate.
My specific example is the passport app. I have a question on the passport app, with where you pay for parking. So would I email the committee or go to the meeting? That's more specifically.
Question relating to that app. You can call the parking department and say, hey, I'm having trouble with my app. Absolutely. You, that's, just because you're a council, you're actually a citizen too, with the problem with your, your parking app. Yeah. Yeah, something like that.
That's if it, like, your app's not working or something's not working. If it was more of a procedural question, like, like, hey, I want to get rid of this. This is stupid.
Dramatic, but okay.
You know.
Or if it's a public safety issue, it's like, there's a parking issue that would come to public. Yes, and.
To start, and if you, hey, bring it to the committee members, you could just feed that back to me.
It would either go to public safety or admin. If it's financial related, I most, it mostly goes to admin.
And I mean, the other thing that, the other, our other process we do is at these meetings, I guess, at this meeting or at the next meeting, you can bring it up under new business, and then likely we'll be like, let's, let's send that, you know, figure out which committee should sort of start with that and bring it back.
Something up like that. Okay, cool. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
And I wasn't trying to be over, overkill and don't communicate with folks.
This is the police department, which I, again, Chief Shaw will go into a little, a lot better detail than what I can go into next month. And I believe there has been some changes in his. His department. Public Works Department. Who just saved us from the, we all made it survive the first snowstorm. Of 2022, so. We appreciate Public Works. Paul obviously is our director. He was supposed to be here. He was, said we would come tonight, but he, they've been working pretty much 24 hours for the last two days, so. Again, their building is located on Church Street near the train tracks. I think Luke knows exactly where they're at. They, the Public Works Department oversees the street maintenance, is building maintenance workers. We have one maintenance worker here and three custodians. And also the wastewater treatment plant, which I'll get into here a little bit, a pre-treatment coordinator, and the wastewater treatment plant operators. The list of the different day-to-day, again, these are just basic day-to-day operations. They do a lot more than what's on this list. We just came up with a general list of just the day-to-day things. I did want to mention the wastewater treatment plant for, definitely for the new ones, or even the ones who have not been to the wastewater treatment plant, I would recommend going on a tour down there. It's phenomenal. John and Roland do a fantastic job giving tours down there. They should be professional tour guides for that place. They, a lot of IUP students come in and they give tours. I don't recommend now the snow, but the spring is a great time for tours, and they're willing to give tours and questions.
Occasionally would arrange for all new council members, anybody on council wanted to go down. I did it once, and it's, like she said, it's. What they cover, you learn a lot. There's a lot that we have that's really good for a small borough area. We have a very good facility. And most people just see it if they go by, you see the, the entrance from the ramp on 119, or you go on hootlebug, and you see it down in the valley. But there's, it's worth going and seeing what we have.
Well, in fact, a few years ago, when several people joined the council, Public Works did put together a tour for everybody who wanted to go. And I'd say that we should talk, John, about doing that again, say in March or April, and it's a little bit more pleasant to be walking around there. The wastewater treatment plant will still be there, no fear.
Down there, very good information, and you learn a lot. Like, you don't realize, you know, what the process.
With Works, haven't seen some of the new things that have been installed, and we could all get an update on how they go about testing the wastewater samples for COVID. So let's, let's plan on that as a public works outing.
That's a good idea. By the way, so I keep planning all my reports. It's a, it's a really nice facility, and it's a significant asset for the Borough. People have offered to buy it. Like, it's, it's a, also a significant, we spend a lot of money down there, a lot of taxpayer dollars. We own it.
Even though it's not in the Borough? Okay.
They are, they are located close to what, Homer City, like, it's right before Homer City, but yeah, but.
If in the Borough, use it. But we own it.
Operate it, but we also have, who's part of the wastewater treatment plant, Roland, he's the pre-treatment coordinator, which by law, the Borough has to have a pre-treatment coordinator. Everybody always says, what's a pre-treatment coordinator? And that's some of the job duties, but by law, every municipality has to have a pre-treatment coordinator, just a fun fact. And our general contact information, we are open, we, we do have our building open to the public now, eight to four. All the department telephone numbers are listed. The Public Works is on here, but again, they're out, so that nobody will probably answer the call down there if you just call directly to that line. Kyle handles all of our. Websites, emails, social media. We're on them all, Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn. You can find the Borough on any of them, so. At Indiana Borough is out, is the general contact information to the public. If they have any concerns, questions, that people get on and send us emails. That goes to that, contact us. That is basically it for the overview of the Borough.
Since for Nicole, presentation. In your packet was a review of Sunshine. If Pat, when we get to Pat, he's going to do that. Okay, now we have.
Thank you.
Committee chair updates. Are, are there any? This administration committee have anything for the good of the order?
I do have that on my thing to announce later, yes.
Meeting only. Public Safety.
Nothing, but we do meet this week on Thursday at seven.
Public Works.
Other than at this time, but again, kudos to our crew. Cut there.
Yeah.
The roads are very, very clear now. There's still a lot of snow out there.
Except the one block that I have to drive on to get here could stand to be cleaned out a little bit better. A tri-op beside the junior high schools.
If a street was missed, who do you tell?
Call the Borough. Which, which street?
Lot of little alleys and side streets, so, and some of them I know aren't the, under the purview of the Borough, right? Some of them are considered private or just not an open alley or mainstream alley. So if, if a citizen were to notice a street that hadn't been plowed, what would the?
Six, six, nine, one, the main Borough number, and then we would get ahold of the Public Works Director and say, hey, make sure this, we got to call on a complaint on this street. We, not that, we didn't get a lot of, we got a lot of complaints on the pile of snow because there was nowhere to put it, so.
I did notice that the corner where the Borough building is, it's nice and clean and beautiful, and there's a, there's a law office across the street. Whose 16-year-old son said, Dad, I swear I cleared a path yesterday. And now it's about yay high, and you see the blade. I'm like, okay, hey Brenda, that contract's not going to be as good as next time. I'm only kidding, obviously.
Are buried under snow in it, but I think it's just a pile of snow.
Yeah. There's just so much there, nowhere to put it.
Anyone here representing Shea Tree Commission tonight, do we?
Tree. Did you, did you appoint anybody from?
I should have, because if there's somebody who would like to represent the Borough, the Borough Council usually has one.
Email about it.
Would, and somebody else did too, so I thought.
I was interested in it. I didn't really know what it entailed yet, honestly, but I was interested in it.
I was the representative of the council for a while. There's a meeting every month. And essentially, it's sitting, sitting down with the other interested people and our arborist. And usually Bob Pollak from Penn State Extension as an advisor. And going over what it's possible. And going over what it's possible to do with the money that's available, what things the commission is concerned about. As far as trying to get more shade trees in the borough.
All right, I I'm going to make a decision right now. You can tell Sarah's been on the. Cause Dawn has been intimately involved with the work of the Shade Tree Commission for the last year. Is our official representative. That does not mean that you can't go to all their meetings. And they're listed on our list of local meetings.
List out.
For any committee meeting, if there's an important issue, you'll find a lot of, lot of us will show up at another committee's meeting to sit in on. And listen to what's going on because the conversation is more formal in these meetings. But in committee meetings are a lot more informal. There's a lot more discussion that there are people here from the public. And and it's a good form to really hash out things.
I go to all the committee meetings and I learned recently in rereading the Borough Code, that I'm actually a member. Ex officia of all those committees, which means I have a vote.
Yeah.
Moving on. Nicole, you have anything more to report?
Admin's going to be moved to January twenty sixth at seven. It's just a day later. Unfortunately, there's a conflict. And then, oh, the new council members, I did get you guys registered for. The boot camp. If something happens that you can't attend or Josh, the P M L, they just said to let them know. So but I just registered everybody. So for you guys. And Kyle, if your email address, if you still want to work on getting the borough email address, talk to Kyle if you not have done that. And we're still waiting on name tags, obviously. So fortunately, we'll get those. They're a little bit backed up. Anything else, Kyle?
Everybody done their financial?
That's why I just now I, yeah. And if you have not gotten given me that, if bring it to, I'll be at the committee meetings. And that's it.
Questions for Nicole? Ben, chief.
Sir, I have a very light report. It's a pleasure getting to. It's been a pleasure getting to know Mayor Simmons and look forward to getting. To meet the new members of the Public Safety Committee meeting or the Public Safety Committee this week. And at the Public Safety Committee meeting will be the first look at the year in review document, but no council member should feel compelled to. Attend because that same document will reach your seats in February and there will be a, as manager Seepa said, a more robust conversation about the organizational chart. The Police Department and. Police related that I think you may want to know.
February work session.
At either February meeting that you would like me to be at. So.
We're going to schedule for the work session. I think that's.
And sir, nothing else to report.
Any questions for the chief?
The one you're talking about in February, is that the one that you tend to do about every year, every other year where you go over a lot of what the the. The Police Department does and indeed.
It'll be very thorough. It'll be a very thorough review.
Mr. Solicitor.
Okay, so I have been tasked with touching. Oh, wait. Play video first and then we'll. Get to the open office of open records, the overview of the Sunshine Act. So Kyle's going to play this video. It's really quick and then we can talk. Wonderful world of technology. All right. So in and as I said, you also in your in your packet have a little more in-depth discussion. As to what the Sunshine Act's all about and why it exists. I mean, clearly it exists so that the public knows what's going on. You know, at the end of the day, we all work for the citizens of Indiana Borough. You're spending their tax dollars. Everything you do basically is spending tax money. I love the, I love the old arguments. Oh, well, that's a grant from the state. Okay, it's still tax dollars. It's still money that you're getting from somewhere else. So, you know, basically there is not a dime that you guys spend that is not tax money. That's the reason for the Sunshine Act. When we talk about deliberations that when I talk about the email stuff. That's could be considered deliberations. You have your bouncing back and forth. Hey, well, you know, let's do this. No, let's do this. Well, if we tweak this and we do that. I don't know what else deliberation is other than that type of give and take. If you're one on one, you're fine. If it's all twelve of you in an email group going back and forth. Chances are you could be deemed conducting borough business outside of the parameters of sunshine. Or open, open meeting. So just be very careful of that. The other thing, and when we talk about emails. Your emails are subject to open record requests. So if you're, if you're sending emails, I think Nicole, you you had said that they all have available Indiana Borough emails for them. My suggestion is A that you use that when doing borough business. Don't need a Secretary Clinton situation where she's sending her own email, you know, business emails from her private server. We don't need that. This way, if a request comes in for something that, you know, any of you may have sent. It's very easy to access and you're not risking having somebody go through your personal email. You know, it's just it it. It's just good practice to use the borough's email for borough business.
That's a good question on that. Oh, because Tammy and I being new and rather chatting with each other. We're curious about that email question and extrapolate that and apologies. I'm getting a little ahead to the phone. If we have a borough business email. Does that stop them from requesting our other email?
Yeah, I mean, my argument would be if it's your personal phone. You know, because text messages, yes, I mean, that there it has been determined that text messages could be requested. You know, I know that. The 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 practice that has been recommended is that, you know. You try to keep everything as clean and separate as you can. Obviously, you're not going to carry around an extra phone. For borough business when you're not being paid, you know, it's a little different. Like when I was the district attorney. I always had I had a county phone and I had a personal phone. And I did that very specifically because, you know, somebody would send me a a campaign question. And I'm like, well, I can't answer that on the county phone because they're paying that bill and you have to be separate. So, you know, I was very methodical and, you know, this was my county phone. This is my personal phone. For those reasons, for open record requests and things like that. Now, I mean, look, if somebody wants to do a true deep dive. And they think you're doing something nefarious or something like that. Yeah, they could probably subpoena your personal phone records to determine. You know, who you were contacting or what you were doing. I'm not going to say it won't ever happen, but, you know, the best advice I can give you is just be very cognizant. Of any communications that you're making, whether it's by computer or phone. You know, I I know, like, for example, Blairsville Borough, they will not. As a general rule, their council people will not discuss for a business via email. They just don't. The the what you'll get is the council packet will go out like it is here. And at most you'll get thank you or receive.
How does that protect you? They can still subpoena your emails. So I guess the question is, what difference does it make?
I mean, as with anything, do you want to be that the person that. Has discovered, you know, ten crazy emails, you know? I mean, all I'm saying is as a public official, I guess this is probably the best way to put it. As public officials. You are subject to those type of searches and those type of requests. So be very smart about what you do and what you put in a text, what you put on a email. What your search history looks like. I mean, you know, in this day and age, I can't tell you that it's off limits. Because you are an elected official. And it may be unfair, but the reality of it is if somebody wants to come at you. You know, that might be a way that they get at you or, you know, so just be very smart and very careful about what you put. Mainly what I was talking about is the deliberation piece. I mean, because it's very easy. It's very easy to start deliberating amongst each other. Even if it's just a, you know, hey, you're full of it. This is what we should do and why. You know, well, okay, that deliberation, that give and take is supposed to happen right here at this table. Okay, and so that the public can comment and ask questions and be part of the process. So, okay, does that make sense? Does anybody have any other questions regarding sunshine or open records?
Committees do vote on things and quorum and a committee is two. That mean that two people on the committee can't discuss things privately?
Well.
With that committee's business?
I mean, the concern. Things then still have to come to full counsel.
Yes, and anything that a committee votes on.
Still has to come to full counsel.
What we usually vote on is to send it to full counsel for a vote.
With a recommendation.
Yeah, with a recommendation, but we're not making ordinances or anything.
You're not actually passing the final legislation. So I I I think you're okay because you don't have a full quorum. You do have a quorum of your committee, but not of the full. Of the full council, which has to make the ultimate decision.
Thank you. My clarification. We'll say that in ten years on the council, well, over ten years now, I've had one request. For all of my emails, which I hemmed and hawed and ignored and nobody ever got back to me about it. So.
And and look, if you were to get a request like that, it should come through the open record officer of the borough. Kyle, Kyle, you know, almost immediately, we're going to ask for an extension. Unless it's something so simple that we really shouldn't, but most of the time you're going to ask for an extension. To do a deeper dive into what you should or shouldn't give them, what should be redacted, what shouldn't be, those type of things. Okay, because there are things that, you know, can be redacted. From the public. Okay, but if you end up with a specific issue or a question, go to Kyle first. Kyle will contact me and we'll work with you. To get the issue resolved. Any other questions regarding open reference and sunshine?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
The one of the things that I sort of felt like in other folks on council, I feel like the suit. The Sunshine Act and the fact that we can't deliberate an email means it slows our process down. And I think it is designed to do that. It's hard to. This I talk about the speed of government. If something happens quickly, we can't come together very easily, very quickly and like make a decision. And we have these scheduled meetings and to and to like, oh, let's call them call an emergency meeting. That costs taxpayer dollars. We have to advertise at home. How much does it cost to advertise?
Twenty four hours in advance.
On the advertise, but it's still it's a hundred dollars minute like minimum for something a little.
Hundreds of dollars, not not an ordinary amount of money, but every time, you know, so it so, you know, for us and it's like for me, I, you know, there's been times I'm like, oh, man, we could, we could meet sooner. We could do this thing. But we can't really. And I think that's good. It slows down our process. It makes us have a more deliberative. Transparent process. So, you know, using our committee structure, using that current structure. And if there is something that's got to be deliberated, that means you've got to go to that committee meeting. And it just, you know, it's a or or come here or have the conversations here. But I think that's the effect of the sunshine law, these restrictions. It it slows us down a little bit. And I think that's a good thing. It's probably designed to. It's just that it's hard to have a transparent.
Councils, you have voting meetings twice a month. So this could be a voting meeting if there was something that needed to be voted on, as you did earlier. So, you know, you're really never going to go much more than two weeks. And if there's something that pressing, sure, the president can call a special meeting, advertise it within twenty four hours. And away you go.
But but also on that is largely, we need to be able to trust our staff to sometimes make those sort of, you know, something's quick coming out of executive decision that doesn't get made by. All the council and to support our staff to make those smart decisions. And they always have, right? They think there was an issue with the leaving I R C park closed for a couple more days at the end of the year. And we weren't having any meetings and there was no way to make that determination. And I think our staff made that determination based on, you know, feedback. And that was the right decision. We couldn't suddenly meet. It was over the holiday. So that sort of thing like it just says, you know, we can't do things quickly. That's a good thing.
Wrote a report. Learned something or at least reminded the things that they know and should be thinking about. From this presentation, I know I did. We have a lot coming up this year sooner late than later. Right now we have a lot of snow. Have reapportionment. We have LERTA. We have A R P. We have inhabit Indiana. We have complete streets. And a whole list of other things going on. They're all good and I'm confident we will continue to make Indiana a better place. However, larger than any of these and not appearing to be in any hurry to go away is the pandemic. It makes some things impossible and others difficult. We don't have statistics available for us at the borough level. But we know that Indiana County is doing a very, very poor job of dealing with the disease. At the state level, our benighted state legislature has decided that we cannot conduct business in virtual meetings. We have to have at least a quorum present in person in order to vote on anything. Yes, they the law that allowed virtual meetings expired and was not renewed. There may not be a whole lot we can do as individuals, but we do have two things, vaccination and masking. Regardless of what the know nothings say, we know that these two can make a huge difference in the well-being of our community. Compulsion doesn't really work with our population, so there's probably. Compulsion doesn't really work with our population, so there's probably no point in trying to pass ordinances that would help mitigate the COVID plague. Signs in this building asking people to wear masks don't appear to affect everyone. To look after ourselves and our neighbors, we're probably doomed to have to put up with this pandemic for years to come. From COVID, others die from not being able to access medical care because of the COVID cases filling the hospital. I for one, would rather die of a gauge. And that's, I have to say.
Only been at this for a couple of weeks, but I've been able to, actually, I can't really go anywhere without somebody saying, hey, mayor, what are you doing? That kind of stuff, which is, that's, that's. The, the chamber did contact manager Seepis and myself and I invited us out to lunch just to kind of go over what they were, they're trying to do here in 2022. And hoping that maybe they can help out with downtown Indiana. So their focus is on DI right now, which I think is real good. And we were very receptive of that and said that however we can all help, we'll certainly do that. So it's just in its infancy stages, but it, it's, it sounds like they're really serious about this, so that's good. Yeah, so we're looking forward to that. And when I bump into all the different things that I bump into, I'll certainly come and report that.
Definitely don't bump too hard.
Sworn in on Monday and I got sworn out on Tuesday, so, you know. So I carried the Bible and I'm doing all.
Is there any questions for the mayor?
This is a topic I've brought up at public safety a number of times. And we've had a number of letters from citizens requesting us to move on this. And I would like council's blessing to work with our solicitor to draft an ordinance decriminalizing small amounts of marijuana and paraphernalia in the borough. It would be a draft ordinance. We could take a look at it, have some discussion and decide if we wanted to go in that direction as a council.
Requesting.
Work with them. I'm not on the committee, so I'm stepping out and asking for.
Want to get a sense of the council that you have permission or do you want to vote?
Pat would be better off having permission from council rather than just me asking him to do something. Yeah.
I work for the entire council. I don't just work for individual council members. So my suggestion was for her to bring it to council. You guys authorize me to draft this ordinance, I'll do it. And then I'll bring it, you'll review it, advertise it, go through the normal steps. I didn't wanna incur work, you know, because that becomes unwieldy. If, if each member of councils calling me and saying, hey, Pat, draft this ordinance or draft that ordinance. That doesn't work. I mean, it just doesn't work because then, you know, I hate to say it, but, you know, I could be drafting all kinds of crazy off-the-wall things and there's no, no chance that it would ever be considered by this board, so. I think it's the best pro, best practice to bring it.
So if you wanna make a motion asking the solicitor to draft.
And I apologize, no here.
Motion in a second and then we can have discussions.
My specific question would be, how would the police chief feel about that?
I was going to ask, I would like an opportunity to visit every committee and to give my feedback on that proposal. This has been brought to public safety. I certainly, this shouldn't be something the public safety would bring forward. But I would like an opportunity to speak with full council and committee. So if you'd allow me that opportunity, I will make plans to speak on that to, to every committee. And that way, all council members will have an opportunity to hear feedback directly. And I would appreciate that opportunity be given.
Will you have statistics?
I will have, I will have what I have to present on the topic. I don't.
We can't legalize. This is not a legalization effort. This is a decriminalization effort. We would be one of the fif, well, we would be the sixteenth municipality in the state. Pittsburgh, Erie, Harrisburg, Lancaster, it goes on and on. They have all decriminalized. It's one ounce and less. It becomes a summary offense. It's a ticket. And you could, we decide on the fee of the ticket. And it also includes paraphernalia, which currently is a higher.
Just so you understand, small amount of marijuana is considered an ungraded misdemeanor. If you're in possession of, it's less than thirty.
That's what they're mostly written.
Currently, the punishment in Pennsylvania is thirty days of probation. And I believe a maximum three hundred dollar fine.
Uh, five hundred.
Indiana County traditionally, it's, you get a three hundred dollar fine, but it's thirty da, thirty days of probation. That's the penalty. Under some of these decriminalization schemes or plans, basically it makes it from an ungraded misdemeanor down to a summary offense, no different than a traffic ticket. And then you have your fee schedule depending on what you want it, the fine to be. Some places are as low as twenty-five dollars for a first offense and it's graduate. Second offense would be higher, third offense be higher. State college, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. Phoenixville I saw was twenty-five dollars for the first offense. So, I mean, that's up to you guys, what you want it to be, what you want it to look like. I will say this, for the first time offenders in Indiana County, my experience and the chief probably understands this too, is that you go into what's called probation without verdict. You pay a fine, you do thirty days unsupervised supervision. If you don't get in trouble in that thirty days, your record gets wiped away and expunged as if it never happened.
That's where it is now.
That's what it is now for a first time offender. After the first, you only get one PWZ.
Or paraphernalia too, or is that just?
His punishment is one ye, up to one year. Because it's an ungraded misdemeanor. So how, how crazy is this? The actual drug gets treated less than the pipe that you smoke in it. Or the rat, the paper that you wrap the joint in. That's a year, but the drug itself is thirty days. Kind of still, you understand how Harrisburg works? I've never, I've, I've, I've been in criminal law since two thousand. I've never understood the logic behind why the drug was treated less than the accessories, for lack of a better term.
Treated differently than adults.
You can draft it, but I don't, and under the Pennsylvania law, the difference is a minor with a drug offense goes through juvenile court. Whereas here, it would be, if they're over fourteen, it would be a citation that would go to the magistrate. It's no different. And if they got a disorderly conduct or something else, that's, you know, a summary offense.
First time offense punishments sound like a slap on the wrist already. So, would the goal be to minimize second and third punishments? I mean, what would the, what's the, what are we trying to achieve by doing this?
We're trying to reduce the criminal records of simple possession of marijuana in the borough. Cuz it's not, cuz you're gonna have to, you can't, you could have the plant, but if you have a pipe, we also have, that's a higher offense.
Please speaking, again, new rookie year here, we could potentially decriminalize the paraphernalia only.
And the marijuana.
She said, but do we have to? Not exactly punished. It's paraphernalia, that might be a problem, but seems.
You still get a misdemeanor record after your first offense. Your first offense can be expunged after thirty days, provided that you qualify for that program. I mean, my experience and your experience, I, I think we have the same similar experiences. That normally happens in first offense drugs.
So, for sure, and my, my twenty years pretty much followed yours and, but I would, prior to giving any statement on the record, I would really appreciate your support in giving me time to put together something. We did discuss this in public safety last year. I do have data from then. And I've talked, I've talked to these other agencies. But because this is striking me cold tonight, I will have a much more polished, professional piece for everyone. And I would just appreciate the opportunity to share it out before we reconvene.
Politically, all she's asking for me to do at this point is to draft essentially an ordinance for you guys to all review and have input. I wasn't comfortable beginning to draft an ordinance without the blessing of the entire body.
Time to get public input as well.
Vote it yea or nay.
We'll get a, we'll have to vote on whether to advertise something. And that doesn't mean we support it. It just means we put it out there for the public to advertise it to the public.
So whenever that's complete and we have a draft and we all agree to, to advertise, then they have thirty days to come in and talk the public. And we can table it, we can, whatever we choose to do at that time.
Just so I'm clear in understanding, can I have a, can I have a timeframe as to when those conversations, you'd like those conversations with committees to be concluded so that I can make plans to visit each one?
I mean, in the month of February. Yeah, I don't think we're looking, the quickest this would ever turn around would be the beginning of March. If everything was moved forward at the exact pace.
Statistics, did you have specific statistics in mind that you wanted?
How many folks have been already caught? Are they minors? Are they adults? How have they fared afterwards? Changed their attitude about, you know, what their choices are? Doing it. I know some people here are okay with it and other people are not okay with it. What is the healthy state of mind of our community? And what does it lead them into? You know, sometimes, some people think the marijuana makes them produce a better lifestyle. Other people think it creates complete irresponsibility. And I just wanna know, like, if we're in charge of a decision like that, how are we gonna be held accountable later?
It is illegal in the state of Pennsylvania, regardless of whether or not we want it to be. It is still illegal, right?
It would, yeah, this has nothing, no impact on that. And the reality is, we're, we're putting a lot of people in, in the criminal justice system that we don't necessarily need to be. That's my feeling. They're only in control of borough and the borough authorities, so this is not.
I mean, I think this is a good idea and I think it helps us for folks to come in town to not walk away, you know, folks who come to Indiana and spend time here to not leave their time in I U P, for example, with a record for something, you know, that's, that's more and more prescribed to people. And you can walk into a store on Philly, two stores on Philly and bought and walk down the street with, including paraphernalia. I think, I think it puts our police in a really difficult position to have, to have a, have a store you can walk in and buy a product that for all, in terms of purposes, looks, looks legal. It puts, it puts our police in a really difficult position to try and, try and do something there.
Does it sell that, post anything?
I don't know. I, I haven't been into Buddy's Buds, but it's always full. There's always people in there. I don't, it's got a lot of traffic. I have really good things about it, but, but I don't know what's supposed to matter. I'm sure you have to be eighteen.
Off of these sales by chance, can we? Okay, just curious.
I had a whole lot of homicides over in my, in my term here, but those that have a, the large proportion have been related to drugs and over weed sales. So the black market has killed kids here in town for marijuana. And, you know, I, I remember when these things happened, you know, somebody, somebody's going to a house and it, you know, it's black markets. So we also got, making other bad decisions. And, you know, the same week this was happening, you know, in Pittsburgh, you know, they're running out of weed at the weed store. And they're like, where's all, you know, at the legal weed store, right? The dispensary, right? So we have this, and we have folks coming from all over, all over the state, all over the country, that are coming here. Lots of folks being prescribed marijuana for, for, for whatever.
There is a difference.
We ask our police to moderate that. I don't think we can.
The opportunity to, I know that, I believe that this will be, certainly there will be strong opinions on both ends throughout the community. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak prematurely. I just wanna provide you with my professional mindset and, and I think I can speak to a lot of this. I don't, what I don't think I can speak to, counselor would be, at least intelligently anyway, would be on effects or recidivism. What I could, can provide or is data for Indiana borough, arrest for Indiana borough. And as I said with, I will just make this general statement that it is, you know, our, our population navigates multiple police departments. And so, it's just sometimes a challenge to do things differently in Indiana borough. I would just say this because if you step across a sidewalk without a line on it, there's no hard door to get to white township. So what you may, what someone may be doing across the street from you is legal or illegal, might create a, its own, its own issues, but.
On this side of Grandview, you're in the borough. If you're on that side, you're in the township. Then what's I U P gonna do? Because the majority of their campus is included in the borough. What's their?
Hopefully follow suit. Hopefully also be concerned about.
It's a state entity, Mr. Smith, you and I both know how that works.
Criminal record, I mean, don't break the law, right? Whether or not the law should be there, that's not what I'm saying. At the moment, it is there, right? That's all I'm saying. And if this is the right forum to bring the ordinance, again, I'm new here, right? You bring it and we talk about it and he gives an opportunity to present, then.
They're pretty boilerplate plus all this.
Chief, in terms of your, I'm just probably already on your, your thought process, but in terms of the reports you're gonna prepare, I would be curious to know kind of what, what, how this will affect policing, like, so will, will what we're proposing make, take up more time for your officers? Or what, free up more time for your officers to do other things? Like, how does this kind of play into our overall use of police resources? I'd be curious to hear about that as well. So, thank you.
We were just reviewing the role of the committees. And community development is supposed to be the, the generator of ordinance changes. But this is obviously also a public safety question. So it sounds as if it ought to go to public safety first. And after it gets vetted by that committee, run through community development. And if anybody has any problems with it, at that point, get them worked out and then it can come to the whole council.
I don't wanna speak, I guess I can speak for community development. I think if it, in this instance.
We just heard.
But, um, I saw that, I was reading that back and I was like, oh, really? That's a lot more power than what we had. But I would, you know, I think because then I come to council, it has to just come through a committee. Given the structure that we've already talked about with chief presenting to all the committees, you know, having a draft. I think I, I would be comfortable speaking for community development to cede that to public safety, to, to, to bring it forward to council for deliberation.
The clarification.
An ordinance. Most ordinances go through community development because they are about the kinds of things.
And ordinances related to the paving up to the middle line.
Vote on the motion.
We had discussed this in public safety and Chief Shaw had expressed that he does not wanna bring, be a part of bringing it up to public safety.
Everything that hit the committee comes to council, cuz, so, sure, that'll work.
Have a motion on the floor. I have a motion on the floor to consider to draft an ordinance that would decriminalize marijuana within the borough. For paraphernalia. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? All right. The understanding is that we thought it, we'll go through the committees and we'll have the input from the chief of police. Is there any other new business? See none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Someone.